Seeing that at 7 o'clock, I'll open up the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board, taking place at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax at 7:00 PM here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room on the meeting dated September 19th, 2024. Make the announcement, it's an open meeting, Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. Full board tonight, all members are present. And let's see, let's start off. Our first appointment, 24 SPR 246-266, 1 Ponsett Street. Revised plan to match the Board of Health and the Conservation Committee. Approvals need to be endorsed and signed by the Board. We can do that.
They are all the way through Conservation.
Conservation is meeting on the 24th.
They're not all the way through.
That's the next meeting day.
They're not all the way through.
Board of Health has approved it.
For 266, not 265.
Correct, 266.
Right, that's where we are. 266, the last information that I got, which was this afternoon, was that they were just typing up the conditions. And I said, "Conditions?", like what conditions? And it was basically for the site preparation.
Traffic control.
Yes, while they wanted to, while they were delivering, you know, the materials and whatnot, that the trucks would stage over at 265 instead of on 58 and then come over as they needed them. They increased the no parking area, you know, stuff that just involves the site work, you know, nothing concrete. I did also, just for my own benefit, I asked, you know, Concomit had basically approved the site plan, other than the conditions were being typed up. We got the letters and whatnot from the Board of Health, they had signed off on it. And this is here, what we're acknowledging is the notification of the septic system was raised up six inches. I spoke with, I was looking for a letter or something that we could get from Pat Brennan. So I called him, I spoke to him today, and he said that basically was just notifying the Board that it was being raised up six inches to a, it did not affect any of the water flow, any of the water process, any of the septic system. It was, it was just a notification of the change, the modification. And so that's basically where we are with, and then notifying our Board, you know, making us aware of it, that it was raised up six inches. It's handling the same amount of water according to Mr. Brennan, you know, can handle, you know, there's no change to the stormwater runoff, there's no change to being able to handle any more or less or indifferent on the septic system, you know. I don't know, Rick, you probably know.
Probably just raising six inches more above the water table, it just needed to go.
And that's what it was.
Yeah, that's what it was, that's all.
It was, yeah, just construction purposes. That's what I figured, you're no kind of the expert on that.
I'd say the reason I could see they raised it was just for the water.
That's exactly why. Otherwise, they could have asked for a variance, but they didn't want to do that.
But still, I know that from being at the meetings, the Chair did not want to let go of the stormwater management on that yet because he didn't like the fact that there was runoff on the back. I know that for a fact, he said it in the meeting.
No, they still have to sign off on it, and they can't get any permits until everybody signs anywhere.
Well, I think that we should make sure that that's correct before we go through and sign it because the stormwater is not done with them for 266, and he was not okay with.
Well, that isn't exactly accurate, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
But it literally, Alan stated, the Chair stated, that he didn't like the runoff going off the back, and that that's why they had continued it and not, so that's not done yet.
What I'm saying, they actually had a signed-off plan, it's the revised plan that they're gonna look at on the 24th.
I think that we should hold off.
I spoke with Peggy this afternoon, the administrative assistant, and she said there were no other concerns other than the fact that it was notifying the Board that it is gonna be raised six inches, and like I said, Mr. Brennan said it doesn't affect anything as far as water flow, water amount, or, because I'm surprised that Alan would say that with, you know, Mr. Brennan right there with the engineer, the certified engineer saying that there is no effect on it, so I don't know what else.
That is interesting because I spoke to Alan yesterday too, and he didn't bring it up to me.
But he stated it out loud at the last hearing.
Again, they still have to get it signed off, still has to get the permit process.
But the site plan for us shouldn't be signed off because everything comes into the plan. Every other piece, every other board is a piece of the whole entire plan, so Conservation is not done yet, so we shouldn't be signing off on the plan because that piece is not done.
Will us not signing off on it delay the project in some fashion?
Maybe be good for the town.
No, I'm just saying, like, if we did wait until everybody else signed, is there anything other than it just being on our agenda that it would really matter?
No.
Well, they got, when's our next meeting?
The 24th.
And theirs is the 24th, I believe.
It delays them applying for a permit. I mean, this is, this is the building town year, I mean, it's only a week or so, but...
Rick, again, you're our expert on septic systems here, wouldn't you?
But it's not septic.
What do you think?
Well, it's not changing anything on our site plan, so I don't see how it would affect anyway we're gonna vote on it. If the site plan's not changing, just the septic, and the, that's up to the Board of Health, and as long as no elevations have changed on the drainage or parking or anything else, then it's really...
Yeah, we showed the Board of Health did sign off on it, and actually, there was also a memo, a letter from the Building Inspector. Ed said that, he reiterated what you said, it's still before anything has to, that's the word, it has to be signed off before anything is issued, and he put right in the memo, he didn't think it was necessary to, you know, open up a public hearing about it. It's a notification of a six-inch height increase.
Well, they didn't do any modification with us on it, and so...
No, they don't have to.
They should present, yes, they do, because it's a modification of the whole entire site plan, and they should be coming back.
It's not entire site plan, it's just a septic area, that's it.
But Conservation hasn't signed off on it either, and so they should be coming back to us, showing us the new site plan, because we are the Planning Board, which means that all of those things are part of the whole, and that we need to make sure that they all work for the entire plan, that is our job.
Have we been down this road before?
Technically, we could sign off on a site plan without anything from any of the other boards.
Yeah, that's the way it's been since I've been here, they always wanted us to sign off first before we go through the other boards, which is kind of bad.
Because, well, if we don't approve the site plan, they may have to change where their septics go or whatever else, but...
Well, that's the whole reason that the site plan has to have all of the other boards, because all of those other boards need to sign off on it, and then we're the final, like, one that says, "Okay, they've checked all of these boxes, nothing's gonna change on the plan, here's the final plan", boom. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense, like, oh, we'll just sign off on it haphazardly, and then the Board of Health changes this, and then this gets changed, and none of it has been presented to us correctly, and it's still that...
But the other boards can change that, like you just said, they could change this or could change that, and that has nothing to do with the plan.
And it never comes back to the Board.
And it has nothing to do with what authority the Planning Board has to say. If that were the case, they could, they could sign off on something, the Planning Board could say, "No, we're not accepting that", you know, they're the ones that Board of Health has signed off on it, Conservation does not have a problem with it.
If they're not done.
The Building Inspector does not have a problem with it, and it's a notification of a change in the height. It's got nothing to do with runoff, stormwater management, or anything like that, not that even that is under the purview of the Planning Board.
I don't have anything in writing from Pat Brennan, we don't have anything in writing from Conservation. Yes, the Board of Health signed off on the septic system, but it should have to go through the whole entire, Conservation has to go through it. I know for a fact, and actually, I would like to ask Fred Corrigan, because I know that he was at that meeting, Fred Corrigan, will you correlate my story and let me know? Can you stand and let us know that, or would you be comfortable doing that?
Well, first of all, this is, this is before the Board, it's not a matter of from the public, so it's up to the Board. Well, if someone wants to make a motion, and then we can vote on that whether or not we sign it or not, we can...
Before we do that.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Before we do that."
Yep.
My simple question is, somebody tell me what the downside is to waiting till the 3rd, till after the next Conservation. Like, what is, what is, what would be so devastating if we just let the process do its thing and on the 3rd we go?
The only reply I would have to that, from a contractor's point of view, it's a minimal amount of time, but this is the time of year that's the most important.
With ground freezes and all that.
You gotta get this stuff in as soon as you can, at least the, you know, the groundwork that, as you alluded to. Even once they just apply for their permit, it's gonna be a week's process or two weeks' process, because each board has to individually sign off again for the Building Inspector before they get, so it could technically delay it three weeks. I mean, that is an estimate, that isn't coming out of our pocket or anything, but it is, it is a problem for the contractor.
Yeah.
And recognizing the fact that whatever Conservation says they're gonna do, they're gonna do because they want to get it.
Or we could vote on it on the issue and then sign off on it with the condition that, subject to Conservation's final approval, that's also another option.
That's reasonable.
Or we could make sure...
And then you're kind of killing both two birds with one stone, but...
I mean, I'm not trying to be, believe me, I'm not trying to be...
No, 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 I understand.
I'm more just saying, just trying to mediate between the two sides, if I get it, and no, we don't have anything from Pat Brennan in writing, and not that, obviously, you know, the verbal recognition of it isn't, you know, valid, but it seems like it's just two weeks, and it would just make this conversation stop.
What's Pat Brennan gonna have to say about it? There's really nothing, you can't have nothing to do with it, he's already made all his comments and made all the adjustments, this is just the Board of Health raising the lead, probably at least a field of six inches, no big deal.
And it doesn't affect stormwater management and any...
No, it doesn't affect anything, doesn't affect any previous site plan upon the land.
I don't see how that would work.
The runoff would be so negligible, it wouldn't be noticeable. I mean, it would just be a tiny, tiny, tiny bit faster.
I have a question on that. So there's some places in Plimpton right after the old Pogo's, that land that was cleared right before that farm, they're digging in front of, so there's a mounded section because that whole piece of land is mounded, and now they're digging a whole section and they have it all off in front, almost like they're trying to put in another part of drainage or something.
Oh, they make it lot on the right hand side?
Yeah, there's a couple places like that.
Where McKinnon packs his trucks, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think he sold that, he sold it, yeah.
That was for drainage purposes, he was asked by the town, I believe, to...
That's my point.
Would you like an answer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm out of turn here.
Yes, your name, please?
My name is Ansel Velasquez, I'm the Chair of the planning board. That property has site plan review, there's a drainage structure that's going in the front there, and he dug the area in advance of doing the rest of the site work because the neighbor on the other side was having an issue with the drainage, so he teed that up, that's where his stormwater swale is gonna be, but by putting it in before he does the rest of the site work, it alleviates the problem that the neighbor was having with the drainage.
All right, that's sort of my point on the whole, like, when you raise it up.
Sounds better hearing from you than me.
That's my point, thank you.
Well, then, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Can we at least, can we at least include the upon, you know, approval?
Contingent upon approval from, final approval, written approval from Conservation?
And that it doesn't affect or change the site plan in any way?
You could even say prior to the application of a building permit, to constrict it a little bit more.
Which still means that they'll have, have to wait for, it doesn't make any sense to just let it go without this happening, because we here are the safeguard for the residents, not the developer and his costs, so I think that we should wait...
Appreciating for the developer.
Well, why not wait till October 3rd then? Because that would be the best thing for the residents, to make sure. Otherwise, you're not really working.
It's gonna be sure no matter what, you can make your own argument, but...
Why wouldn't we all just wait? I want in writing from PGB, not just a phone call from one of us, where there's five members here, there isn't a president to this board, there is a chain of how the meeting is run, but we all should be obtaining the same information so that we can all read it, we don't have that. We don't have an approval from Conservation, we don't even have the approval sent to us from the Board of Health right here, we have nothing in writing, and Conservation did state at that last meeting, I was there, he did state, "I don't like the fact that there's runoff going off the back, this whole thing is not being contained", and in my opinion, commercial property, because this is a commercial, because it's over four units, needs to keep all of their stormwater on their property, not just some of it.
Every property.
I'm sorry?
Every property.
Okay, well, Thorndike stated at the meeting, that, at the Conservation meeting, that, "No, no, no, that's, that's okay", and Alan said, "No".
But they had already signed off on it, right?
Yes, they have.
They still have a hearing open for more parts of their Conservation, it is not complete.
Well, the only thing they have all is the conditions.
I want it in writing to the Planning Board, because on the application, which all of a sudden is missing all the rest of the pages on this one here.
What are you talking about?
This only, we only have one page on the site plan application for 285 Holm Street, there should be more pages. That's not the site plan application we usually use and have used, and I don't remember voting to change that, so that's not a full application, but...
That's why we talked about the process.
Well, we are, but it's a, it's a point. So the point is, is that on the site plan applications, they have to check off that they send us all of the information from all of the other boards, and it's not because it's a checklist for fun, it's a checklist so that all of those other boards send in all the information so that the site plan is completed and we sign off after it's completed, not before. Yes?
Well, yes.
Okay, so, so haphazardly...
We discussed this at the previous, we went round and round, and that's when you said that the checklist is the Halifax document, no, that checklist was drawn up by, it was drawn up by the administrative assistant and the Building Inspector about 15 years ago, because people were walking in and wanting to know what it was, it's not an official Halifax document, it's, here's what you need to do.
We've been using it for 15 years.
It just seems like a silly hill to die on, or to try to die on, if it's all gonna get wrapped up on the 24th. I mean, if it's easy to put the contingencies in there to get this, but this seems a little excessive of a conversation from, and I don't mean in any direction, but I just mean, it's just, I agree that we need to get everybody to sign off on it, like, we don't have anything in writing.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
So what I'm saying is, why are we dying on this hill when it's all gonna get wrapped up on the 24th and then we meet on the 3rd?
Ah, okay.
I'm just saying, it just doesn't seem like it's worth everybody's energy unless there's a reason that somebody can tell me that makes sense, other than it delays their ability to dig holes by a week. That's all I'm saying. And if contingencies wrap this up, let's wrap it up, and if they don't, and we'd like to see, it just makes more sense to wait, then let's do that, but let's not die on this hill.
All right, once again, we're back to, what's the pleasure of the Board? Who do we want to make a motion? Tom, what do you want to do?
I would like to make a motion that we continue this hearing, or site plan sign off, because it's not a hearing at this point, site plan sign off till October 3rd, and I still would argue that they need to come back and show us the site plan modification.
Do I have a second? There's a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Can you remove the comeback for a site plan modification part? Because I'm all in on continuing this till October 3rd.
Oh, can, that was just a point, it wasn't about, that was just a point.
I will second that, that we just...
What's your motion, then?
My motion is that we continue this to the 3rd of October at 7:00.
Till everybody else sign off.
And, hold on, and add on to there that we have the PGB in writing, the Conservation sign off, the Board of Health saying everything, like, so that we have it all in writing, and then in our file in the Planning Board, everything is where it should be, in writing.
It sounds like that's our protocol, right? So I'll second that.
All right, I, yes, I have a motion, I'll second on the floor, any further discussion from members of the Board?
I am inherently wanting to move this thing along, but we're not talking about that graded timeframe.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
If it was three nights, we're like...
I'm taking your point, and I'm saying, you know, we're talking six, seven days.
Rick?
Yeah, I can see that, Tom, so I can see their point too, why, we're gonna sit here and argue about it all night.
Yeah, right, exactly, well, I mean, yeah, let's move on.
I do, myself, I do agree with the motion, the explanation, the second part, I don't agree with, you know, and don't want it as part of the motion, but if it's simply the motion being continued to October 3rd, to hear from the Board and whatnot, then...
And then we can discuss it then.
Then, yes.
Why wouldn't we get in writing what PGB said? I mean, why would that be a problem? I mean, that would be just something...
Well, it's not going back to review, right, for that, for that six-inch septic...
But he's, but he talked about something and stated it, then he should put it in writing as part of the review.
Well, the good news is, we have a motion and a second, and then we can now...
And again, that's...
Okay, everybody's agreed.
That's on Conservation.
Right.
Again, that's nothing to do with the Planning Board, if they, if it should, yes, it should be in writing, he's being paid to, for the Board and whatnot, so...
Yes, but again, it's not...
But it shouldn't be our motion to make him put it in writing, that is, I guess is my point.
We can request it in writing, right, that he's signing off on it, but more so...
We can also refuse him because he didn't bring something in writing.
Right, right.
I mean, we still have the option to discuss this at the...
I was gonna say, we're moving this to discuss it again October 3rd, we're not moving it to pass it October 3rd, so let's just do that.
Right.
So that's the motion. The motion is that we'll continue it till October 3rd.
For further information.
For further information.
We're continuing it till October 3rd.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, I'll ask for a voice vote.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Your name is.
Okay, moving on.
Okay. Next one, 24-SPR 244 Arnold Werra, site plan review application for MAP 73 lot 7A on Plymouth Street. Joseph, how are you? Good evening.
How you guys doing? Joe Webby, just wanted to come and let you know that we have filed with the historical board committee, and we have not heard that problem, I just wanted to make sure that we could get this continued.
Oh, yeah, you have it continued.
We did continue it for two...
Yeah, you signed it back, right?
I thought it was continued to today, that's why I was...
It was on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, could we continue that again?
Yes, I think so.
Joe, do they have the, do they have the renditions and whatnot of the front of the building when it's gonna look, the historical commission?
I literally handed it to Joe.
Oh, okay.
That's by a show.
Yeah, he stated that, yep.
So it's just matter of getting an appointment, sitting down and go through it. What did we give them the extension to when you came?
October 9th.
October 9th.
October 9th, we meet on the 3rd, so, so we're all good.
So should we continue, we'll continue 24 SPR 244 Arnold Werra, site plan application for MAP 73 lot 7A Plymouth Street till October 3rd at 7:00 PM.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a second?
Oh, a second, I guess, if that's what we have.
Oh, I didn't remember you were making a motion. Oh, do we have a second? All those in favor of continuing to October 3rd? Your name is.
Come on, Mr. Chair, keep this momentum going, let's go.
You have three minutes to 7:30.
285 Holm Street, PS, PSPR 24-1, site plan review application, continue to October 3rd, meaning per request of the applicant. Hi, how are you? I saw you on the run, and do, it's continued, I mean, you have anything you wanna add or anything?
No, I mean, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, because we sent it in by email, so I just wanted to make sure that the Board had gotten it and that it was continued. And then I can give you a little update, so our mission is, spoken with the Review Engineer for the Conservation Commission, they had a long conversation, and they've talked about some changes that he's gonna make to his calculations and some revisions. He was hoping to have that done for the next Conservation Commission meeting, which is Tuesday, but I don't think he's gonna get it done, so we've continued the Conservation Commission to the following meeting to provide that information.
How are we doing with time with you guys for the Planning Board?
Yeah, we need to...
Do we need any...
We extended it the last time, but I think, given the Conservation Commission's schedule, we will probably need to extend that again.
Do you wanna do that now?
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so we'll give you another, like, 30 days for now? I just don't remember what date it was continued to the last time.
Is it in minutes?
I think it's October 19th.
3rd, how about 17? That would be, because I asked once the 3rd, so 14 weeks.
Well, she might just be late talking.
Oh, you got right.
Yeah, but she might be just talking like the 30, like, how Werra is till the 9th, that's not a meeting, it's just how we're, we're the 30 days.
They got extended 30 days.
Okay. September 5th.
To what?
Extend to the 19th.
So, you know, it was dated the 9th.
We need a 14, 14 days, we do the 17th.
Oh, and then tonight's the 19th, okay, the meeting.
Right.
So, okay, so then it would be October 9th, so we should just be safe and give her an, uh, do you want an extension for 30 days from October 9th to November 9th?
Yes.
While you're here, you might as well...
Yeah, it's too bad.
We have a...
November 7th, November 7th is that first meeting of November, so that'll be the second time.
Okay.
It was just a two-day ago.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allow for a 30-day extension on the site plan review for Liddell Development LLC, petition number PSPR-24-1, 285 Holm Street. Their original date was August 6th, it was continued on, for a 30-day site plan application review from July 9, and we're continuing it another 30 days from October 9th to November 9th, 2024. Can I get a second? To allow this extension?
I can't do all those seconds.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, it was signed the 9th, the extension would be 30 days from the 19th.
That's tonight.
Which is tonight.
Oh, wait, oh, wait a minute, okay, so the original...
This was, this was just approved.
Okay, 31, so 25, I see what you're saying, 25 was 30, and then it was gonna be 15 days later from that, so it was gonna be tomorrow, that's what it was, it was gonna be tomorrow, so we'll do a 30-day extension from the 20th of October, which will be November 20th. So I'll say that we're gonna do a 30-day extension on the site plan to go from October 19th, 2024, to November 20th, 2024.
Just in time for Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Bingo.
All right.
Sir, a second?
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of a 30-day extension, I'll ask for a voice vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
And Rick?
I can't vote on that.
What's that?
He's gonna abstain, because he's not voting.
Yeah, there's always one.
Always somebody.
The cast is for zero.
Thank you.
I'll have this ready for you in a second.
That's up for a chair, they're ready. Meeting minutes if everybody's, and some bills.
What's that?
So all we have left is meeting minutes and some bills. Get home in time for the game.
Well, she's writing that up, but... Well, she's, uh, writing that up, uh, everybody have a chance to review the minutes that we sent out for, or slim, any changes, corrections, deletions?
We had a meeting on, August eleventh? We had one on August first and August twenty-second.
August fifteenth.
That was.
August one and fifteen.
That was canceled. And then the next, we have the meeting on Octo-, um, August twenty-second, the fourth Thursday.
The infamous meeting.
Like, the meeting minutes for the twenty-second.
Is that what you said?
That's supposed to be August first, not August eleven. That's gotta be, it's a typo.
What did you say?
The meeting, yeah, so the meeting minutes that we had in our email was the, uh, August twenty-second, so I think it's like one, one and twenty-two.
Yeah, first, it's coming today.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-second. I never saw any elevens, we haven't, like I said, I never had an August eleventh.
Um, it, it's actually the nineteenth, because I forgot thirty-one days in October, okay, November nine.
Eight twenty-two meeting minutes, that's what it's, eight twenty-two, so it's just a typo. On our agenda, it's not a typo on the meeting minutes, it's all.
Right, exactly, it says it out on the minute, right, minutes, that we got. Any changes, deletions, or additions? Do I have a motion to accept the, uh, minutes?
Yes, I have an addition to make, um, there's, um, the original two minutes of the meeting aren't even noted in it, and I think that it should be noted, so therefore, I would send them back to the secretary and move them to the next meeting.
The, the original two meetings dealing with.
Two minutes.
Notification of the meeting, nothing was even mentioned in the minutes about it.
It's because it was posted in.
Well, the conversation, I want, I want it posted in the meeting minutes, because everybody else was emailed or notified except for.
I wasn't, I wasn't notified either, Amy.
You stated it that night that you were.
No, I didn't say, no, I never said that I was notified, I never knew about the meeting either.
Well, I would like that to be in the minutes, because it's not, and that doesn't reflect the whole.
It didn't hurt my feelings, and I get notified, I found about it anyway.
It didn't hurt my feelings either, it's just wrong. It didn't hurt my feelings, sir. But you can laugh, but, but it's not a laughing matter, it's actually a key.
Okay, the motion, a motion on the floor, pleasure of the board, accept them or, or not, or what's?
Put it off to the next meeting. I move, we take them up at the next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, for the minutes, uh, to be corrected or added to?
It was not there, so I cannot vote.
Okay, so voting on this would be Rick, Rick, Mary, Tom, Elias, myself, and Amy True. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes, unanimous.
So we have this to sign, I think I did it correct, I wanna check, and it's November nineteenth, not the twentieth, as I stated, because I forgot to collect count the thirty-first of October.
Do you have a bill? W B Mason Bill?
Oh, we have the bill.
Do we have the bills?
I didn't see it, anyway.
I, I see, uh, bills.
There's nothing in my fault, we do one thing at a time, so. Don't get messed up, yeah.
Bills, that's with the extension.
Anyone who goes right here, abstain.
I'll make a motion to pay invoice number two four nine zero one eight seven one two for office supplies in the amount of twenty-eight dollars.
Uh, there's a motion and a second to accept the, uh, invoice, although, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, paying the bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Amy, you wanna sign this for the applicant? We'll have the secretary scan it and send you a copy. Yep.
Can you take that here?
The what? I'm sorry?
The one that I gave you.
Oh.
Because that's my.
I stole it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, so we had, so we had bills, minutes. All right. You know what he'll do, he'll put it in the book.
Are you ready for a motion to, um?
What?
Uh, bedroom.
Oh, I thought there was something else.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say. Yes, sir.
Killing my vibe, man.
It's okay. Fred Corrigan, Rosewood Drive, just a couple of quick questions, and it, I've been looking at some of these sites and some of these permits, as you well know, but it seems to me that these contractors are taking advantage of the boards. And I'm gonna be sending out some pitches and Gmails to all of the boards showing activity that's going on on some of these sites, and they haven't got their permit yet. Now, how does this happen?
You can do site work, it's construction you can't do.
Okay, this is my question, Bill. Okay, you can do site work, does that mean you can lay down blacktop?
Yeah, you can pave.
Okay, okay.
I mean, they're not, the, the, the building permit is for the buildings. And that starts with foundation work.
Right.
I mean, anything you do, like tree cutting or whatever, that's incidental, that, that isn't covered by permit.
And it can be done by anything?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have another, one of our projects, which is Mr. Ware sitting here tonight, and in our first meeting with him, he's building this big building with the doors on the back so he could park everything inside on blacktop, what have you, and yet now he's stacking vehicles up on his lot, and I have pitches to show that. And is that not taking advantage of doing something with what you're proposing to do before you've got your permit?
Not necessarily, but that's a building inspector question, a zoning enforcement officer question.
Okay, I'm wondering if that would be one that should basically not concern the boards, but really concern the enforcement.
The enforcement, the zoning officer.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so.
We have, we had, oh, we didn't vote, actually, we did not vote, that's right.
We have a motion in a second.
Um, we do have a motion, we have a second.
In a second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.